I was an NBA coach today. My tennis team's finishing up their match now. I get ready for this, so like I'm coming in like same time as coaching the team.
Like a pro.
Yeah, I know, right?
Did you get over to Indian Wells this year?
I did one day, yeah. And interestingly enough, I found out there was, you could get a room at the Motel 6 for $280 a night. So we ended up staying in Cala Mesa, which you could get for $60 or $70 a night. My son and I went down there and watched the match one day.
Hey guys, just so you're aware, if your microphones are on, this is me.
It'll be recorded, thank you.
Okay. So there. Well, I was gonna get it back from 1980.
Maybe not, I see.
1980, when it was $6.
I don't think I've ever seen it under like 26 at that time, right?
Well, yeah, I think originally it was, like, you know, back in the 50s or whatever. But that was amazing when I saw that Motel 6, an Indian, not even Indian models for like $280 a night.
It's what the market will bear.
A lot of people match too much at Ojai in a couple weeks, it's gonna have their turn. Next year, they've actually wanted to come back to Miranda Park.
Good because of the courts being done, yep, very good.
And actually, they're not, interesting, yeah, I guess, competing, Ojai's not a tennis center. They've let the courts go, turn it up, competing here.
Interesting.
Okay, good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The time is 5:30 and I'd like to now ask the clerk to take roll, please.
Councilmember Gama.
Here.
Councilmember Schnop.
Here.
Councilmember Rollins.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hernandez.
Here.
Mayor Berg.
Okay, thank you. And...
Can I announce that Mayor Berg has an excused absence?
Okay, Mayor Berg has an excused absence for the record. And since we have no one here for public comment, I'll move on to our closed session and ask our attorney to read the closed session items, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There are three items on closed session. The first of which is public employee performance review evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957 and as for the city manager. The second item is public employee performance review and evaluation pursuant to the same government code and as for the city attorney. And the third item on closed session is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, government code section 54956.9. And it's based upon existing facts and circumstances that there's significant exposure to litigation.
Okay, it's 5:31, we're gonna recess now to closed session and return my turn.
It was me again.
Yeah? That's really not right. No?
Oh yeah.
No, yeah.
I think you both are worried about losing your seats. That's what I think.
Well, you're always way behind us.
Well, I see that, like since you're driving.
Wow.
How's it going?
I'm fine, how are you?
So, thank you. Oh, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. How are you?
Hey, you've been there.
Good, hey, we're good.
What do you mean?
It's just young.
A lot.
A lot. Okay, I don't wanna.
Um, can you uh
Harden?
Well, yeah, that too. Um, can you uh read?
Yes.
Can you read speed up names, expand names?
Hello, hi. Hi.
Yeah, reading, I will see. All the time. It will okay.
Is that something?
True. It will be like who is is in the age of the common name.
Yeah, that is um but the other name
or is that yeah. So, I mean, that is so that is like so topic and region by some it's this is this is it was see this 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 is this is this I just did three videos. This night I this Saturday this paper this street character get this picture that was which was told to us.
Uh, could it cost three dollars?
That would be
Is is that people that buy good, good um, these years see um I just talked about it earlier today.
Hit till uh, hit and have it.
Not that Russo, that's
Ruso.
So, yes.
It's moving.
Yeah, uh house not too bad. So, for
Our track.
Right, they go the whole shops.
You heard about um sort of Victoria and that whole complex
Well, it's from
No, we're not heard about it.
You know
Oh, oh, I know you okay, okay.
Left of my dog. Left of my dog.
No, I'm with you, and it was in a newspaper. I mean, it was very
Yeah.
So, it was Thursday. But um, I think okay, I'm going to some house you know, that old complex at um it's just south of
Or Rouse.
Yeah, but it's south of that. Um, on the other side of the street a huge complex that was kind of vacant now, there's it's um
Regil pants?
Yeah, I think there's lighters there. There's um
Looks a lot.
I think it's all worth that's why I had this they're used to be a restaurant, and you go down this uh
Oh, you're talking
Yes.
Victoria.
That's awesome.
Oh, I know. Oh, I know, it's uh
They I remember little bit. I don't know, I they are they're street level shopping and so uh but it's just I just heard about that.
Yeah.
They uh
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It has
Very controversial.
Yeah.
How we I don't know there's I want to say part what can we envision of the experience other things. So, if you are you listening or you
We're all listening. I mean, we've talked to some members um, more briefly about say I mean, there's lots but it's um you um and another their selves and person who are affect the way can
I'm probably saying Washington, we can see less people speaking to so
Hello.
Hello.
No, I was I was do you guys have such or I was thinking that there was something like like major stadium or people walk and so or maybe not um think it's all in real country first time are you worried about um, the property and property and that that so long they just it only some over the park. Yeah, it was the park the little park.
Hello.
Oh, how are you?
I'm okay.
Good to see you.
Inside.
It is something just happened as I'm shocked. It's basically our own there's nineteen thousand properties sold that required by mall. By mall. Okay, so for okay, it's
And what and just and uh twenty years. Um, so what did happen is numbers of places will be able to this much years ago take people out or one or two but they don't I knew it was surprise the and the capital people I mean, I asked the school I don't know who who uh I think I think he wants the numbers
Yeah, I know.
Why they have six hundred things um, and if you look at those numbers maybe maybe um, that keep
I do, I do those those and our if they have receipts and hats seat. So, it's no, I I think about this I did to all with and um and um maybe something um
that's stated I mean, I
For
Yes, above beyond I
Certainly.
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah.
Above beyond the whatever should they
But so most of those same one same
I don't think you would claim
Well, I believe I believe and a lot of them that I would be ready for this. They said this is they usually has and
And maybe the time from this problem that so is that which
Yeah, I meant
or price price
Well, the property has been sold. I meant people to who bought it and necessarily manufacturers and this
No, no, no. Uh, general
Yeah. sources. I don't think they'll have store in but they're this this help all 州 counties and
Winter counties on any of those. Yeah. Like they can. I wonder, boy, I think of the. You know. Oh, it's important. I think. Important. Topic. I'm I'm using myself over here. Oh, you can hear every word? Uh-oh. Uh-oh. At one. And now it's all over.
Yeah.
But. Well, I mean. Here was discussed that. And just the. People like. There were two ways. Some people. One is. Um. Down. Well, I might have. Had before. I was sorry about. Everything. And. So I don't know. I got a friend. We. By. We're getting. Just the. Captain. I'm one of the. So. And. Meantest. Yeah. So yeah, uh. Everyone's hate. Hates. Not to. Don't choose. Sure.
You need to. And you talk about many of these.
Right.
And I'm interested about.
Oh, sure. Sure.
So that they can understand.
Yeah. I don't know.
I think.
I'm sure.
What in America? What is this?
Is that.
It will.
Well, that's always. They're having. That's that's. More serious.
That's me.
Cause I'm sure I'm sure faces are. Those stuff. I'm talking.
Amazing.
Amazing. Of course you are. Jeff, Jeff, Jeff. Well, I see her all the time. So. No, no. You guys are interested in speaking, so. Although. That may be. Probably. It was a special.
Yes.
Well. It was neat last time. All the guys that we've done. For all the time. Those. Those. It was uh. I know it's a serious thing. But I'm using this. I'm serious. That would be. It's an honesty. I. I don't know. So I'll say hello, I'm gonna take that down. Um. And do you do? Oh, thank you. This is Becky. Oh, okay, we just.
Everything. Everything.
It's usually. It's usually sit down. It's very. Oh, see. Oh, no, I I. You're so amazing. Thank you for announcing. Thank you for your voice. All all. Yeah. Hi Becky.
Um.
It's a public parking spot.
I got your shirt by the way, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I'll be wearing it on race day.
Cool, cool. I'll be walking, just so you know, limping at that. I'm in the wrong seat. You're right. Yeah. I think that's probably. He's sitting, you're sitting in my seat. Get out of my seat.
Good evening. Hello, everyone, and we're gonna reconvene the regular meeting. It is now six thirty P M. Uh, please join me in the flag salute.
Hand over heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening, we have the pleasure of hearing the inspiration from Councilmember Stephen Gama.
Thank you, Mayor Pro- Tim Hernandez. Um. Daisy, could you come up here, please? So inspiration comes in many forms, and today it's coming in the forms of Daisy Tatum. Um, on March twenty third, the city of Port Juanimi honored the Stewart family. That honor was for good reason, that the Stewart children, all seven of them, excelled in our public schools. Some of their nicknames include Eagle Scout, A S B President, Captain, Lieutenant Colonel, Colonel, and other. Things that they have done have been very well respected. They also attended some of the best colleges in the United States. So I'm sure that there is teachers and administrators behind their successes in public school. Today, we get to recognize one of those persons in Daisy Tatum. Daisy Tatum came to Oxnard with her family from Arkansas in nineteen forty five. She's the oldest of three children. At that time, the Tatum family lived in the projects. Her father started out picking lemons. He became a stevedore at the port of Juanimi. He then got an appointment with the federal government as a mechanic where he excelled. Eventually, in the nineteen fifties, he opened his own auto maintenance shop on Cooper Road. That's also the road where my dad's doctor's office was, so my dad may have been a customer of your of your dad. Clinton Tatum believed in helping people in hard work, his children were involved in the auto shop learning how to maintain cars. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Clint.
Even the girls.
Even the girls. Clinton sponsored several youth sports teams in Oxnard. In nineteen sixty two, Clinton Tatum suffered a traumatic brain injury, where he was in a coma for nearly a year. The Tatum family rallied around Clinton, providing undue love and support. This could not have come at a more difficult time for Daisy, as she was transitioning through high school. Daisy had to work to support her dream of attending college. She attended the University of Arkansas utilizing Greyhound bus rides to come back and forth to California. Through hard work and perseverance, Daisy graduated cum laude with honors from college, with a degree in physical education, recreation, and health. She then went on to complete her master's degree in education. In nineteen sixty nine, she started teaching at Channel Islands High School. She was Teacher of the Year in nineteen seventy two. Later that year, Daisy became an assistant principal for Juanimi High School. That is where she became involved with the Stewart family children. I think all of them, or most of them, right? So Daisy later became the principal of Oxnard High School, and in nineteen in nineteen ninety seven. I had the pleasure to start working with Daisy at Oxnard High School. The first time I met with Daisy, she demanded that I accompany her during passing period and the lunch period. She explained to me that she expected me to interact with students on her campus every time I was there. Daisy's energy and enthusiasm with students was contagious. She explained to me that students need positive interaction with adults. So say hello to all, learn their names, and engage in conversation. This became my mission, not only at Oxnard High School, but at every high school in the district. I found that Daisy was right. Because of her, I would go to the most disconnected students and introduce myself. Most of the time, the students would think I was a cop. But after a few uncomfortable minutes, we would engage in meaningful conversation. Much to my surprise, most students would remember my name and would seek me out when they would see me on campus again. So when I had a risk management, when I had risk management business at Oxnard High School, I would schedule. It around the lunchtime so I could hang out with Daisy at the front gate. And that's where we'd interact with students. I can tell you that Daisy was inspired by many teachers to be. With that inspiration, thousands of students benefited from her tough love. I witnessed it many times. And positive mentoring. Daisy was the first African American female principal in Ventura County, I believe. She is one who has, through her actions, gone above and beyond in all that she does. Because of her father's influence, Daisy has an affinity for cars, and she still drives her first car, nineteen sixty something Jaguar. Interesting enough, that car replaced the Greyhound bus and was her transportation back and forth to California. When she transitioned back to teach at Channel Islands High School with her brother, a friend, and a dog packed in her Jag all the way from Arkansas to California. There's no better person I could think of who has lived an inspirational life. Daisy has positively influenced youth of our community for over fifty years and continues to do so by hosting foreign exchange students, working on the Board of Directors for the Strawberry Festival, and I'm sure many other endeavors for our community that that we're just not aware of. So with a little more than a month to go to our Port Juanimi Youth Fair, it's more than appropriate to recognize Daisy Tatum. For her inspiration to youth. To everybody in the audience, everybody watching at home, from this day forward, I want you all to keep Daisy in mind and to seek positive engagement with youth. Because you start with a hello, you learn their name, and eventually this kid could turn his life around because you showed him interaction. And if we all do that, we all can be ambassadors for inspiration, and Daisy, I just am so tickled to have you here tonight, to recognize you as someone who's been truly inspirational to our community, to our youth, and we have a certificate of recognition, and I'd like to read it. In recognition in recognition of you being an inspirational leader dedicated to the youth of our community, the City Council and the city of Port Juanimi hereby proclaims the utmost gratitude and appreciation to Daisy Tatum.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, in a few words, I always felt that every child is a miracle. And when you see that child, that child is not like any other child you're ever gonna see again. So when a child comes to you, you have to stop, and you have to listen, and you have to give them their full undivided attention. When a child reaches high school, they are so, they just don't know what's gonna happen. It's a challenge to them, and it's more of a challenge to a parent, because the parent knows. That when the child starts to change, and I always say when a young man can start to smell under his arms in high school, he thinks he's a man. Well, you have to tell him he's still a child, and you have to try to nurture. And you have to try to nurture, you have to try to help that person, and you have to make sure that they understand what discipline is. And when you say something, and every child knows, when you say something, you mean it, and it never changes, then they begin to trust you. And today, I think some of our trust is gone, and talking to young people is not like talking to young people. When I was talking to them, I don't know what has become about the change, but if you're honest with the child, and they believe in you, then they will always come back to you, and you're able to mentor them. But every child is a miracle, and everybody needs to remember that, no matter how challenging that child is.
Thank you.
And then I'm gonna get this corrected, and then I'll deliver it to you for coffee, okay?
Okay, it'd be great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you Daisy. Thank you, Councilman Gama. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask our Madam Clerk to take the role.
Councilmember Gama?
Here.
Councilmember Rollins?
Here.
Councilmember Schnop? Mayor Pro-Tam Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor Berg?
Mayor Berg is excused, he's attending RDP meeting in Washington DC. Okay, we're moving on to the agenda. Any changes to the agenda as it stands? I'd like to receive a motion and second to approve the agenda, please.
Agenda?
Second.
Says here to take a voice vote, so... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, the motion approves, the agenda's been approved. And City Attorney, do we have any announcements from our closed session? Thank you. Alright, this is our public comment time, and I have two sheets up here. The first, the public comments portion of this meeting is a maximum of 30 minutes, and the person may address the City Council only on matters not appearing on the agenda, and has three minutes to do so. Our first person is Becky Brunin from our Port Juaniemi Historical Museum.
I think that's reasonable.
Mayor Pro-Tam, Council and staff. I'm Becky Brunin, and tonight I'm representing the Port Juaniemi Museum, and giving you an update of activities we have going on. On the 20th of April, we will have a lighthouse tour. And anyone interested in that needs to sign up at the museum. Every Sunday, we have Sundays with Johnny Adamson. And he will be there to answer any history questions anyone might have, take you on a tour of the museum, explain all of the exhibits to you. On the third Friday of the month, we have the port tours, where you also need to sign up for those at the museum. Coming up on Saturday, our distinguished speaker will be Wayne Day, and he will be talking about the day the Vikings arrived in America. On April 13, John Crist will talk about the Lewis and Clark Expedition Voyage of Rediscovery. And on May 4th, we have Dennis O'Leary talking about the history of Cinco de Mayo. And that's it for right now.
Thank you Becky. Okay, our next speaker is Bernadette McDowell from our Public Library.
Good evening, Mayor Pro-Tam Hernandez and City Councilmembers. I'm Bernadette McDowell, City Librarian at the Ray Pruder Library, located at 510 Park Avenue, Port Juaniemi. I'm here tonight to inform you and the Port Juaniemi community about an upcoming event at the Pruder Library. This coming Saturday, April 6, from 12 noon to 2 PM, the Teen Advisory Group will host the library's annual spring fling. Kids and families are invited to celebrate spring by visiting the library, to enjoy live animals at a petting zoo, and to make crafts and play games. And people of all ages are invited to embark on a new adventure by picking up a gently-used book at the Friends of the Library Book Fair, which will run from noon until 3. So we hope to see everyone next Saturday, April 6. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have flyers on the table in the back, if anyone is interested.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, if there are no other public speakers, I'd like to call upon Darcy Taylor for our next presentation, Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County.
Good evening, Mayor Pro-Tam and Councilmembers. It's an honor to be here today. I also wanna recognize Ms. Tatum. My mom was a teacher at school when you were principal, Geraldine Taylor, so congratulations. I hope I'm not dating myself. Well, we're really excited to be here. Obviously, this is a great opportunity for Habitat for Humanity to become a part of the city of Juaniemi. And we've never had an opportunity to build in this community, but we think we have a program and a project that meets the needs of the community and the county as well, funding us to do this event, or do this build. So I'd like to walk you through a couple of things that I know that were a concern of the City Council. The first slide here is, really talks about our history. Habitat was founded, the first Habitat in the whole state of California, in 1983. Since that time, we've built 72 units across the county. 130 home repair units have been done as well. Obviously, we focus on low-income, 80 AMI is our goal. Most of our clients are in the, somewhere between the 60 AMI and the 30 AMI. We're only the only affordable housing developer in the county. And obviously, a lot of people have the misconception about Habitat. We do not give homes away. People buy our homes on a long-term mortgage process. So those are some of the questions that initially happened, in the initial closed session of the City Council. A listing of our current homes, all 72 homes. I know one of the questions that came up was, have we ever built in the city of Juaniemi? We have never built a home in the city of Juaniemi. As listed here, these are all 72 homes. There are additional six homes that we have that are outside of the county. We have a couple in Carpenteria, and a couple in LA County. But we have never built a home at all in Port Juaniemi. This will be our first, if approved, opportunity to demonstrate how we build homes, and the process in which we select our home buyers. So this is the listing here of every home we've ever built in Ventura County. One of the other questions that came up, what kind of houses do we build? We do a combination of single-story homes and double-story, two-story homes. We do a combination of also condo units and townhouses. We've got a couple examples here, I'll leave you with some copies that are more legible for you, that kinda list the kinda ground floors and the kind of floor layouts that we usually typically do. We typically build three-bedroom, typically three-bath, two-and-a-half-bath, some of them. All of them primarily designed to hold families that consist of four to five family members in that single unit. Here's an example of our First and Hayes project, which we just completed two months ago. We did six units on First and Hayes, example of the type of house. I'm very proud of the fact that most of our houses can be identified by the quality in which we build our homes. There's no doubt that, and most of our units across the county that are still in tremendous shape, cannot be distinguished from a regular builder's home versus what we build with our volunteer programs. As you can see, very modern structure, architectural designs are well within the bounds of the communities in which we build. And the space units that are a part of that process are also modern in their technology. We also are involved in our build projects with regards to water-saving units, as well as part of our structures, and solar is also part of our build patterns. I would also, before I leave this slide, make the comment that most of our homeowners sign agreements with Habitat that last 40 years. So even though they have individual mortgages that are part of their buys, we continue to have relationships with them to maintain the property in a way that maintains its value. And as I'll mention later on in another slide, is that we're very proud of the fact that we've only had one foreclosure of the 72 houses that we've had, and that was due to a death in the family that we could not pass that house on to a family member. So most of our tenants are still in the houses that they purchased in their original form. Here's our current build that we're doing right now. We're doing two-story builds on Berry Street and Camarillo. I'd welcome any of you to drive by the project. This is a rendition of what we're currently building there. As you can see, that these two-story houses really fit into the neighborhood. We also are proud of the fact that our landscaping is a part of the build structure that also brings value to the communities in which we build our current homes in. As you can see to the right, this is where we're hoping to build in Port Juaniemi. This empty lot here, we're excited about what we hope will be a future project for us in Port Juaniemi. One of the other things that we do also when we come into a community to build, we also do repairs on surrounding buildings in the area. When we went to First and Hayes, we renovated the women's shelter across the street with painting, inside room repair, and put cabinets and other kitchen utensils, utilities in that build as well as part of our First and Hayes project. On this project in Camarillo, we're also gonna do some renovations at the church, which is across the street of this property. So that's also something you get when you get Habitat, not only just the builds, but also the work we do in the communities surrounding our construction. The process, I think is important for you to understand also, is how do we select our tenants? One of the things that we go through, it's an extensive process of background checks that are part of that process. As you can see here, we confirm the date of the build, the family selection orientation is a full... The application process is very extensive. What Habitat's model is now, is our clients come to us, bank-approved, ready to move in, with their financing already pre-prepared. So in the past, Habitat used to carry the loans ourselves, we no longer have that model. Most of our clients are already pre-approved, and have gone through the evaluation process to elevate them to a valuable buyer of our homes for that community, particular community. One of the things that you do have the right, as a city, to do, is to determine who those buyers are. For example, our Camarillo build, in the application process, they required that any of the home buyers of those two homes either live or work in the city of Camarillo. So there is some leeway for the city to determine what types of individuals become buyers of the homes that we build in those particular communities. The application process is reviewed not only by us, but by the bank. Most of our clients have a credit score of 600 or better, and they maintain that credit score over the build process of a year, and then are required to maintain that over the 45-year agreement they have with Habitat. We do home visits before they become eligible to purchase a home. We look at the current home that they're in, and how that home is maintained, and what that may reveal to us in the application process. And then we have a board that reviews the applications. And again, you as a city have the right to look at who the applicants are, and approve those applicants before they become homeowners. Camarillo, again, is a classic example of that process. We, as Habitat, had a selection process. We chose the clients. We then had to go back to the city of Camarillo, and get those clients approved by the city as well. And as it mentions there in point number eight, that's a process that goes with any of the clients that we have in our build programs. Habitat home buyers must meet three primary requirements. They have a need, ability to pay, a willingness to partner. One of the things that we do very well is, every person that buys a Habitat home is required to put in 500 hours of sweat equity. It's a way for us to determine their commitment to the purchase process, as well as, it really instills in them an understanding of why we're in a community, and their willingness to partner with the community in building long-term relationships. The need here is, Ventura County, obviously, many of you know this, this is nothing new to any of you, that we have a difficult housing problem here in the county. That goes for affordable housing, as well as low-income housing. And I can attest, when I moved back to Oxnard after being gone for 20 years, it took me three houses to find one. And I was fortunate in the case of finding a home. And I can tell you that those individuals that are in this category, where they're spending 50% of what they earn on housing, is a tremendous need in our county. Habitat, I know, doesn't build enough homes, we wish we could build more. But what we do build does meet this particular need. When you look at the community that has received Habitat homes, you realize that it's beyond someone moving into a house. It's improving the lives of the entire family, and offering a community of hope. I'm real proud to say that a lot of our clients, first-time home buyers, which is one of the requirements to have a Habitat home, have sent their first children to college, because they've been able to buy a home. Been able to buy their first car on credit. Been able to do a lot of things that a home-buying experience allows for an individual to experience as part of the Habitat process. And then here, what it does in the local community, it increases the graduation rate, we have stats to prove this, increase children's health. Everybody knows that we are a better society when our children have a breakfast when they go to school, a roof over their head, that brings, builds stability and long-term health as part of that process. It increases the net family wealth, increases the property values, and boosts the local economy. All of these things are demonstrated through the relationship that Habitat has with the local community as it relates to what happens when we come into a particular community. And these really are the things that, through shelter, we empower people as part of that process. And really, that's really the gist of our brief presentation here today, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions or comments?
I had a few.
Rich?
So how do you establish the rate of, what you sell the house for? And is it, does it vary based on like their economic need, or is there a set price? How does that work?
Great question. The sell price of the house is determined by the AMI. We cannot sell a house higher than 80 AMI, based on our cost of build. Habitat does not sell any houses for more than $330,000, which is below the Ventura County AMI.
I'm sorry, I, what does AMI mean? What does that acronym mean?
Average medium income.
Okay.
So, for example, if the top of the 80 AMI is $78,000 a year, still would be considered in our county, a low-income home. So we cannot sell anything above that. And also, Habitat International has guidelines in our bylaws that require us, as a low-income builder, not to make a profit on our house. So what we do, we sell, most of our houses range between 220, 257. It's the average cost of the houses we build. And on all of our builds, up to date, we don't make any money, and in some cases, we lose money. And we have to put money into the pot to finish the build process. But what is unique about the buying process for us, is whoever buys our home cannot sell that home for higher than 80 AMI. So over the course of the 40 years that they're in a relationship with us, and as I said, all but one, when they go to sell that house, they have to sell that house at that 80 AMI or lower, so that house remains affordable. And that keeps the affordable housing market that we're a part of available to those individuals that need those low-income homes.
So when they sell the house, do they, does it go back to Habitat for Humanity to pick who's going to go into the house next time, like the initial owner?
Another great question. It depends on how Habitat has funded the unit. For example, the six houses you saw in the city of Oxnard, we took, we had CHODA money, and we had some home money, that put the city of Oxnard in position one, as the reseller, and Habitat for Humanity in position two. Meaning that the person could not sell the house unless they met a certain criteria with regards to the city of Oxnard's HUD, home, CHODA requirements. And then for us, at position number two, they had to meet requirements regarding the resale related to Habitat. All of the people that own Habitat homes will not sell the house, or do not have the right to sell the house unless Habitat has the first right to purchase it back.
Any more questions? Councilman?
Councilman Gama?
Thank you. So, what would the typical payment be for the eventual homeowner? If it's two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars roughly, if you know?
It varies. So, if a first-time home buyer got a couple of discounts, their payment could range from seven-hundred to nine-hundred. If they took no additional resources from the city or from the county as it relates to programs that are there for first-time home buyers, low-income families, their payment would range somewhere between a thousand to eleven-hundred a month.
Nice. And what's the timeframe to get going on this project that you identified for Port Huonimi?
As soon as you give me the go-ahead, I'll start the process of architectural designs. We'll do some soil testing, some other things, and we'll start right away.
And then, one of the other things is, do we sell the property to you, or do we lease it to you, or how does that work into the mix?
I think we're still in the process of discussing what that process would be. For us at Habitat, we could go either way. We could either build, as we have in some communities, built on land that doesn't belong to us. There is the trust process, land trust process, which is another way to put the land into a trust and remain there with the city, or Habitat could lease the property for a minimal fee over the course of the forty-year agreement. So, there are all three ways are open, but I know that the city manager and Habitat are open to, or we are, anyway, open to any one of those options as a possibility.
Very nice. I just have one comment. Darcy's brother went to school with me, and as a, when I was in eighth grade, Darcy Taylor saved my friend's life.
Wow.
And I appreciate that action you took then, and I appreciate it today. And Rodney, I talked to him the other day, and I told him, and I said, "Remember Darcy? He's the one that took you to the, took you home." But thank you.
Was this the skateboard incident?
Yes, it was. It was. It was.
One more question?
One, how do you, like, the designs are very nice. Who makes the final determination on the design of the house?
Well, we, yeah, we have, we have five different designs that were put into place by a Main Street architect in Ventura. We usually choose from those. Our houses average about sixteen-hundred square foot, so we have a pretty solid template. It depends really on that, on that size, and whether also it's a two-story building or a single-story building determines also the design that we have. We're pretty cookie-cutter, except for the exterior, which we try to blend into the local community's current build structure.
Okay. City manager, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Darcy for the presentation, and we'll be, we've been working with them for a while now on the detail, kind of the deal points of the property transaction. The city owns the lot that Mr. Taylor showed earlier, so we'll be coming back to the council. Some of that will be closed session while we're negotiating the deal, and then the council will have to approve the final deal in one of our open sessions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. We're excited to have you here in our city.
Okay, moving along, we are now at the city council consent agenda. I'll be asking for a motion in a second to approve. First, I want to read the titles of the reports that are on the consent calendar. Minutes of the regular meeting of March eighteenth, twenty-nineteen. Item number two, finance cash disbursements, March second through March fifteenth, twenty-nineteen. Item number three, amendment number two to the professional services agreement, PSA, with regional government services, joint powers authority, RGS, for human resources, professional services. Item number four, access state and federal summary criminal history information for the purpose of conducting criminal background checks. Item number five, amending chapter four, part C, section three-four-two-seven point two-zero to article three of the Port Huonimi municipal code for the purpose of adding definitions relating to cannabis activity. This is the second reading. And item number five, I'm sorry, item number six, measure U oversight committee. Are there any changes or recommendations? Otherwise, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would like to just have a brief discussion on number six, if we could, and I would make a motion to approve all others on the consent agenda.
Okay, so, we're pulling item six from the consent agenda.
And the item number two, if there could be a little discussion from the city manager about what that plan is.
So, do we need to pull two as well?
Mr. Rollins, do you mean number two or number three?
I'm sorry, number three.
Okay. So, we're pulling number three and number six for discussion? Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the other items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, why don't we do item three?
Sure. We'll, I'll launch into this, and then we'll have interim deputy city manager Joe Tanner available too to answer any questions. He worked in most detail on this. Because of all of the transition going on in our human resources division, we have, we don't have a department, we have a division that's part of the administration department, we have been using the services for about the last six to eight months now of regional government services, or RGS, which is a firm made up primarily of retired city and county employees who have now come back in their second lives as contract employees through RGS. And it's a good way to fill in gaps in your organization while you're going through a transition. So, this contract with RGS has been to provide a variety of human resources staffing needs while we work on the analysis of our HR, kind of our revamp of our HR division, which coming attractions, next meeting, next council meeting, April fifteenth, Mr. Tanner will come forward with our recommendation for how we should have human resources structured and bringing all of this back in-house, so then the need for an outside firm like RGS will not be there anymore because we will have an adequately staffed HR division. But basically, that is the background of why we have RGS here. I'm going to have Mr. Tanner talk about the specific numbers and what we're requesting tonight in terms of their existing contract.
Thank you, city council. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You know, as you can, as you can see from the list of vacancies, we have quite a few for an organization our size. There's about forty total, plus another thirty-five to forty lifeguards that we want to onboard before the summer program begins, so we have our work cut out for us. And so, basically, after some additional analysis, staff had estimated in the mid-year budget that it would take about two-hundred-and-ten thousand total to sort of finish out the year, but in kind of re-analyzing that number and at the pace we're going at, and just the number of positions, and to make sure that we don't have to come back again and ask the council for even more appropriations, we estimated that it's going to take a total of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand in total to finish out the year, to get as many of these recruitments done and get these folks onboarded as quickly as, as quickly as possible.
And you, you were mentioning that that money, the two-hundred-and-sixty that you're requesting, that can be offset by a certain amount of salary savings already?
Yeah, we're saving roughly about a hundred-and-forty thousand a month. That's pretty conservative. I think, basically, I just kind of took the midpoint of each of the vacant positions and then added another twenty-five percent for salary and benefits, which is kind of on the low end, depending on, you know, how big their family is and how much insurance coverage and benefits that they do receive. So, as far as the cost of RGS is being totally offset by the vacancies throughout the city.
Councilman Gama?
Yes. So, looking back to last meeting, we did our mid-year budget adjustment. Was that last meeting?
Couple of meetings ago.
Couple of meetings ago. Well, I'm still looking at it because it's kind of complicated. Anyways, my first question is, where is this money coming from? Is it coming from the personnel slash city clerk line item in the budget?
It's mostly a general fund item, and it's coming out of the personnel, personnel's, the term, HR division slash city clerk division budget.
Okay.
It also is some of the positions, like solid waste equipment operator, solid waste equipment operator two, wastewater, those, the contract is being divided up, and they're paying, those enterprise funds are paying their fair share for the recruitments for those positions as well.
I'm just trying to...
Through the allocation.
Yeah, I'm just trying to track this in the budget. So, we, we did a mid-year twenty percent increase on the personnel portion of the budget, and I imagine that's to cover this additional expense. So, all those positions that aren't filled right now, but were they not budgeted for in the current budget, or?
No.
All the positions listed, except for the HR manager and the community services officer, those are planning to come forward April fifteenth, but all the rest are all authorized positions that have been approved by the city council.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Kind of, but I think...
Does that mean that they were budgeted for?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
But if they're not filled, then there's...
Then we have salary savings.
Yeah, salaries.
Salvation be low.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted to build a, track that as we move forward in the budgeting process as a way to learn. Thank you.
I had one other. There's a long list of people, positions that we have to fill. Is there a top priority? I mean, I look at close to fifteen positions, maybe twenty, that are budgeted for that haven't been filled. Is there a top three or four priority, once you get this firm on, that you're going to hire or recruit and hire for those positions?
So, they've been actively recruiting most of these positions already, and so the priority, the direction that I've given to them is, number one, health and safety first; number two, the lifeguard program, just because of the timing, we don't want to have everyone and/or as many people as onboard as we possibly can when the program starts; and then, number three, essential to city operations, which would be basically the rest of the remaining positions.
Okay.
So, as we kind of move forward, we can kind of cherry-pick using that methodology.
Any more questions or comments? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve number three on the consent agenda, professional service agreement with regional government services.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to measure U oversight committee, item six. Thank you, Joe.
The reason why I asked this to be pulled is so that we could have a discussion, so that the public could understand exactly what we're doing here, because I know it's important to the public to understand the process that we're going to embark on for a measure U oversight committee. So, with that, could, Mr. City Manager, could you explain exactly what we're considering here and how it's going to work out down the road?
Sure. Sure, council member. The voters of Port Huonimi back in the November twenty-eighteen election approved measure U, which is a local sales tax measure, a full cent, with that money coming exclusively to Port Huonimi. It doesn't, none of it goes to Sacramento. We get to keep it here for local programs and services. And as part of that, the state law that allows cities to put this kind of local tax on the ballot, you have to have a citizens oversight committee as part of that new measure. The law doesn't give a whole lot of specifics about the makeup of the committee, or how often they meet, or any of those nitty-gritty details, but it does say that you have to have an ongoing citizens committee to provide oversight for the way that those new monies are being used. So, that's what this committee is all about, and at our last meeting in March, the council gave staff some direction on some of the specifics of how they want that committee to look here in Port Huonimi. And this resolution takes that direction that we got from the council and implements it, so that that citizens committee, which in this case will be a five-member committee, will be established in direct support of the direction that the council gave. And the next step after tonight, assuming that the council approves the resolution tonight, will be to start going out and recruiting members and starting the application process so that citizens of Port Huonimi that are interested in serving on this committee will apply, they'll be considered by the entire city council. Each member will bring forward a nominee for the committee, and then the whole council will vote on each of those nominees.
Once we have a seated committee, will then, they will then govern themselves, so to speak? I mean, they'll decide who will be their chairperson, and how will we interact with the council after that point?
Yeah, so, they will have, they'll kind of be constituted in the same way that a lot, any of our citizens' commissions would, and they will meet, I think, the way we currently have it established in the resolution, is a minimum of four times per year, and they will be working on a report both for the council, that will go to the council once a year, and we hope to do a community report every year of how your measure U dollars were spent, and this committee will be very involved in producing that report each year.
Any additional questions? Do you have another one?
I just, go ahead.
Just one. And one of those members from, I remember our discussion, will have specific financial experience. Would you like to elaborate on that?
Right. So, let's see exactly how we worded it. Yeah, so, committee members shall be eighteen years of age or older, may not possess any felony convictions, are residents and registered voters within the city of Port Huonimi. One member shall be either a business owner within the city or have qualifications that include accounting, budgeting, or other relevant areas of fiscal and financial responsibility. And then, the final bullet point is elected officials at any level of government and employees of the city of Port Huonimi, and/or the dependents of each are ineligible to serve as members of the committee. So, those are the qualifications as stated in the resolutions before you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gama?
Yes, one more comment. So, to the people in the audience, people watching at home, if you're interested, knock on Rod Butler's door.
That's right.
Let us know that you're interested, and I think, are we going to make an announcement and kind of solicit people's interest as well?
Yeah, we'll be, again, assuming the resolution's approved tonight, we'll start an outreach campaign through website, social media, probably newspaper, any way we can get the word out to people. There is an application that will have to be filed out, and there will be an interview process too. And I was talking to the mayor, Pro Tem, earlier. We want to be very careful about how we structure that interview process so that people have a clear understanding of what they can expect, and we'll be talking about that once the applications have come in, and we'll have the council choose from a couple of options in terms of how you want to do the interviews.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilman Rollins?
Yeah, no, at that time, I'd like to move to approve the resolution.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion carries. Resolution has been adopted. Thank you. All right. Our next item on the agenda is the city council business items. City manager and city attorney. Item number seven is the new Indy plant, water treatment plant, odor monthly update.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Hernandez. So, approximately a month ago, city attorney Charlie Green provided an update regarding what we then knew about the odor issues and other issues, noise issues, surrounding the wastewater treatment facility in Oxnard, as well as the new Indy power plant. Since that time, or during that time, we were informed that Huonimi Foundation and Mr. Tom Dunn have been involved in buying very specialized sensors and whatnot for placement around the new Indy plant, as well as the wastewater treatment plant, because the biggest concern here is that we've been unable, everyone has been unable to identify the source of the odor, where it's coming from, and what particular chemicals or compounds might be causing the odor. And regardless of where you look, everyone seems to have their own ideas as to whether or not it's wastewater treatment, or it's, or it's new Indy, or if it's a combination thereof, or where it's coming from, or at certain times of day, it's better or worse, and weather conditions certainly affect it. And so... And so, I've been informed that one of these sensors has already been placed out at the site. And the reason for this is it has to undergo a certain amount of testing to determine whether or not the sensor needs to be adjusted, or tweaked, and whatnot. And next week, there's going to be two or three more sensors put out in a phased implementation, and in an effort to try to collect some data. And another interesting thing about the sensors that Mr. Dunn informed me about today is that they will be able to, anybody who has a smartphone app or whatnot will be able to monitor the real-time recordings of the sensors for up to some distance away of it. So, there will be some immediate feedback based on what these sensors are seeing at any given point in time, which should also help us to identify what compounds are present in the air when the reports of odor are most prevalent. Until we have that data, it's really everyone's guess as to what is the source of these odors and what exactly is going on with them. In the meantime, I believe City Attorney Charles Green provided this information to the public, but there are two phone numbers to call for the city of Oxnard, depending on the relative times of day. And so, Oxnard Public Works has requested that people call the number 805-488-3517 between the hours of eight to five, Monday through Friday. And they've also requested that you call 805-797-7598 after regular hours to make a complaint. The goal here is that these odors and sounds and other issues are transitory in nature. And so, it's important to try to get somebody out there within the hour to try to figure out what's going on. A lot of the time when these reports are being investigated, the odor's not prevalent, there's no sound, there's nothing there anymore. And so, it's important that as many people as possible. It would be incumbent upon us to increase our data set, so that we can understand exactly what's happening, we can get to the bottom of this. In addition, Mr. Dunn informs me that the Huonimi Foundation and his partner have been involved working behind the scenes with various other governmental entities. And should the council wish to have any more information on that, I've been informed that Mr. Dunn wouldn't mind speaking.
Could you repeat the 797 number, please?
The 797 number is 805-797-7598, and that is for after-hours complaints.
Okay. Thank you.
I had one question. The amount of time and effort that Mr. Dunn, Mr. Bromer, put into purchasing these, has the city of Oxnard embraced their efforts that they will in turn utilize some of the findings? And I, well, I'll answer that question first, I guess.
Personally, I haven't had any contact with the city of Oxnard. However, I have been informed by those who have, that the city of Oxnard is aware of the problem and is intent on being cooperative.
I know Mr. Bromer has been in, is in regular contact with public works staff from the city of Oxnard about the placement of the sensors and just that whole process of the sensors that were chosen, where they should be placed. So, from what I've seen and heard, at least Oxnard Public Works has been very cooperative so far.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this a receive and file? Is there a motion involved in this?
Just a receiving file.
Just a receiving file. Okay. Let's move on then to item number eight, amending the Port Huonimi municipal code pertaining to sidewalk vendors.
So, mayor and council, sometimes legislation is passed in Sacramento at the state level that cities then have to respond to and follow through on and implement. And this is the case with this action, it has to do with sidewalk vendors, and we are now required to have an ordinance. So, Mr. Spalding has put this together, a couple of staff report and the ordinance itself. So, he's going to be presenting the report to you tonight on the content of this ordinance, what it's attempting to do, and what steps we need the council to take tonight.
Okay. Before we go on to Mr. Spalding, Madam Clerk, could you just record that Councilwoman Schnaps has returned? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and City Manager. On September 18th, 2018, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill 946 into law, SB 946 for short. And the purpose of this bill was to essentially legalize street vending throughout the state of California. It took effect on January 1st, 2019, and by its own provisions, it declares that any ordinance or resolution inconsistent with SB 946 is immediately null and void. And what ends up happening is, the city's municipal code currently contains Article 3, Chapter 3, Division 17, that states basically, it is unlawful for any peddler or solicitor, vendor, or miscellaneous sidewalk peddler or vendor to sell goods from a push cart or any other device on a public property or on private property without consent of the owner. This ordinance is clearly in violation of SB 946, and as a result of its operations, it's null and void by state law. And so, in an effort to comply with state law, SB 946 strictly circumscribes the areas of regulation that local agencies can engage. It specifically says that any regulation must be directly tied to objective health, safety, and welfare. And so, in reviewing the confines of SB 946 and looking at SB 946's statement of purpose, there's a section that says, "California has an interest in the regulation of traffic, whether in ensuring the appropriate flow of traffic, or in ensuring the safety of pedestrians on the road or the sidewalk." And acknowledges that there are regulations that are directly related to objective health, safety, and welfare. And so, to that end, we've identified a number of areas where the city does have the ability to regulate directly for objective health, safety, and welfare concerns. So, the key components of the proposed ordinance are key definitions that are going to need to be in place, such as stationary vendor, roaming vendor. And some of these terms come from the language of SB 946, and some the city have provided for clarity's sake. Because stationary vendors and roaming vendors, you can do different things with them, they can be restricted to different areas under the terms of SB 946. And so, in our second section of our ordinance, in sections 5603 through 5605, we have the administration and licensing requirements. And we're allowed, one of the things that SB 946 does is it sets out the parameters by which a local agency can require business licenses or street vending licenses, and the things that cities are allowed to regulate for health, safety, and welfare. And so, in our ordinance, vendors will be required to get a sidewalk vending license. They'll be required to submit valid identification, their names, addresses, telephone numbers, the proposed hours of their operation, and proposed locations of the operation, the types of items they intend to sell, proof of valid insurance, a valid California Department of Tax and Fee Administration seller permit, among other things that are integral to the city vetting a legitimate business. The operational requirements are things, are found in sections 5606 through 5607, and these are things like size limits to carts, and things, locational requirements for street vendors. For example, stationary vendors are not allowed to be set up in residential areas. Roaming vendors, which are defined as vendors that are transitory in nature, only stopping to complete a sale. SB 946 tells us that we cannot restrict them from residential neighborhoods. But because we can restrict stationary vendors, and it's inconsistent with the use of a residential zone, the city believes that it's within the objective health, safety, and welfare to enable that regulation. And so, along with that, blocking public rights of way, blocking access to public transit, blocking crosswalks, being so many feet away from bus stations, and things of that nature. Those were all things that were designed to enhance public safety and keep rights of way clear for pedestrian and traffic. One of the other things that SB 946 accomplished was that it immediately prohibited the use of criminal sanctions for violations of street vending ordinances. So, there are no more misdemeanors, there are no more infractions. Everything has been changed to an administrative penalty system. And with SB 946 administrative penalties, it capped the amounts that cities can charge for first violation, second violation, third violation, and thereafter. Our ordinance follows the exact language of SB 946. In addition, SB 946 requires that cities have an administrative appeals process that takes right-to-pay determin, takes into account ability to pay determinations. And so, once again, we've incorporated those sections into our ordinance in an effort to be compliant with SB 946. Are there any questions?
Okay. Councilman Gama?
Yes, I see in 5606, Section D, and it's talking about width, length, height. How is that a safety issue?
Let me find 5606 subsection D. So, you're talking about 72 inches width to 54 inches, or height including roof running of 78 inches. If we're imagining that a vending cart would be placed on a sidewalk, anything in excess of those dimensions would force pedestrians into the roadway.
Right.
You'd be unable to get, it would basically impede the flow of pedestrian traffic and would create a dangerous situation or choke point wherever any street vendor would be found. It also, by setting those limits there, we're maintaining at least an 18-inch path of travel between a street vendor and a curb.
So, the reason why I bring this up is, on the beach, we have a sidewalk that's shared with dogs, walkers, and occasionally bikes. And at some point, we may have to decide, you know, what the sidewalk is best suited for, bikes or walkers. But there is enough room in isolated areas where we could designate, hey, this could be a street vending spot, and remove the cart from the sidewalk. Would we be able to designate certain areas, or do we have to let a street vendor roll up and down the sidewalk? Or could we identify a number of positions, so to speak, that are off the walkway?
As it became necessary in certain areas, this council could, by ordinance or amendment there too, designate certain areas, provided that there are specific findings that are related directly to objective health, safety, and welfare. It sounds like your concerns regarding the beachfront sidewalk are directly related to that, health, safety, and welfare, given that there is significantly increased pedestrian traffic, be it by all sorts of means, with animals and things of that nature. And so, the fact is, is that the city would have some interest in preserving the safety of pedestrian traffic along those avenues. And it wouldn't be, in my opinion, it wouldn't be inconsistent with SB 946.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I fail to ask, after your report, if there were any public speakers who wanted to comment on this agenda item? No speaker cards? Can we get you to sign in after you're done?
Yeah, absolutely. On Surfside, you're all familiar with it, there is, our car's speeding along Surfside all the time. But not to exaggerate, I'll say later in the evening, first thing in the morning. And there are areas there that, one thing you didn't talk about is not only the traffic, I'm talking about car traffic, but also the fact that who's going to clean up the refuse? You have somebody doing business, they're selling hot dogs, or whatever they're doing. Who's responsible for that? And who's responsible for the enforcement? So, I would be most concerned that there would be regular enforcement. I don't know, Mr. Attorney, if there can be signs that are posted where there is no vendor activity that's allowed, once it's decided by the city council. Those would be my comments.
Thank you. And could you complete a sheet for, a speaker sheet, please? Thank you.
In response to those comments, I'm looking through the ordinance right now, and I'm trying to find the operational requirements required that a sidewalk vendor be no further... Okay. Sidewalk vendors who vend food items must provide trash receptacles to their customers, must ensure proper disposal of customer trash, trash receptacles must be large enough to accommodate customer trash, but less than 20 gallons. In addition, stationary vending carts that vend food must be operated within 200 feet of approved and readily available toilet and hand washing facilities. And so, at least 56 section, proposed Section 5606 does take into account that any street vendor or licensee would be responsible for cleaning the trash area going on. As far as enforcement, I imagine it would be Port Huonimi Police Department or code enforcement.
Councilwoman Schnaps?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. So, Mr. Spalding, in the hours of operation, do we have to designate that, or how does that happen? Because it says the director may. So, how do we get that to, you know, be something that is sustainable, but it doesn't impede maybe some other things that are going on?
The director being the finance director, Ken McDonald, under this schema, the defined hours of operation are those that are consistent with whatever zone the party is located. And so, having, in fact, SB 946 talks a little bit about how you can't hold different businesses similarly situated to different standards. And so, for example, if a C1 or C2 zone allows business to take place till 8:00 p.m., well then a street vendor similarly situated in that proposed business would be allowed similar working hours. And those would all be delineated on the actual vending license. They would have the terms and conditions of those permits, which is why part of the application procedure asks for proposed routes of travel, proposed location, proposed hours of regulation, to make sure that it's consistent with city zoning.
Okay. Did I see another sheet come in? Okay. All right. We have a speaker card here for Garcia Gama.
Gloria.
Gloria Gama.
Gloria.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor and Councilman, I would like to speak on this subject about the sidewalk and the vendors. It's not so much the vendors, but I walk every day, except Thursdays and Sundays, with my sister and brother-in-law. And we walk from San Miguel Circle all the way down to the lighthouse and back. And I want to tell you, you have a nice, big parking area and a bike lane, and yet we have to compete with the bike riders who don't ring their bells, who don't call out. I've gotten almost hit three or four times. And we compete with the dogs on leashes, off leashes. We compete with the messes, we, people where you're trying to walk side by side, and we constantly have to get in a long row. And then, when you're coming by the restaurant where all the sand is piled, because it's never cleared off enough, we have to walk through the sand with bike people coming, and it's terrible. And I think there should be, you know, if you have a bike lane, ride the bike lane. The sidewalk is for the pedestrians and passers or whatever. If you have a leash law, enforce a leash law. You have a sign, a city ordinance that says, "No dogs on the beach." But every dog's on the beach. Nobody enforces it. So, I raise six children, five sons and a daughter. And when I made a rule, I meant it to be followed. And so, people here, they go on the beach, they don't care because nobody bothers. They don't care if the dog poops because you give them all the free bags. They don't care because nobody bothers to do it. So, I think you should put restrictions on vendors, because it is hard when you get by them and you walk, you have to walk around. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gama.
You know, I would, if I can, Mayor Protem, I would suggest that there would be then, especially for places like the beach and all, that there would be areas that could be designated, you know, so we don't run into this. Because I, for one, have seen, you know, that you are competing, even though the sidewalk has been expanded over the years. Clearly, with something like this out there too, it's, it could be a problem. Do we also have an idea as to what this could potentially cost somebody who wants to do the push cart vendor program, you know, from start to finish? Like what it could possibly be in the range of?
Off the top of my head, it would fall under the vending license provisions that are already in place, and I believe perhaps Mr. McDonald could help me out with that. I think it's $120 or something approximately, for a business license. However, it's my understanding that I think the business license ordinance is being revisited at some time in the future. So, I think in the next few months, those numbers would be subject to change following a fee and cost study.
Okay.
So, if somebody comes to us saying that they want to do this, but they're selling food, they actually have to come with all of that other two, is right? All the health, code, everything?
Yes, they would have to- they would have to- there's a whole series of things in there that talk about how you'd have to comply with county health, environmental health. There's also a requirement that a certain level of insurance is being held. I believe it's a- what is it? It's a million or something like that.
So, we would verify all of that if they're coming to us for a permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are all terms of the application.
Okay, very good.
I would just, I would add, and then I'll turn it over to you, Councilman Rollins, that the licensing costs consider the administrative costs that we're going to be incurring as a result of this new ordinance. So, just recommendation that we make sure we're covering our costs.
Absolutely.
Councilman Rollins?
So, I noticed that you know they would have to provide the routes and stuff that they follow. Within this, is there any kind of limitation for multiple ones to be at any one location for long periods of time? In other words, could you run into a whole series of food trucks that happened to, this is a hotspot, and you might have three or four, and they've given you, or is the state law prevent that?
Unfortunately, my reading of the state law is that it does in fact prevent that. You cannot make restrictions based on density. And so, even things relating to spacing and things of that nature become problematic unless they are directly tied to a health, safety, or welfare concern. And so, when you see people piled up on each other, that's when you can make a determination that there is health, safety, and welfare concerns. It's also one of the reasons why, in the application process, we want to know routes of travel, and we want to know proposed locations. Because the permit terms or the license terms will restrict that vendor to that location at particular times, which will give the city at least some ability to control congestion and piling up. But other cities have attempted to put forth density requirements and things of that nature. And in the comments of SB 946, that's been specifically prohibited.
So, under the safety guidelines, what was just expressed earlier, already, there's a certain impediment of traffic, you know, for the walkways. If you multiply that three to four times, that wouldn't fall under safety requirements?
Right now, I know this seems like a really odd concept, but the only people who have a protected status on the walkways right now are street vendors. So, take that as you will. We cannot ban them. They're here to stay. There's nothing we can do about it. It's kind of like we pass our own direct regulations and tie them to those narrow areas that the state has allowed for us, or we take what the state forces on us, and that's completely unimpeded street vending.
It's really interesting that this topic has come to this level, that the state is imposing this on us, because I would imagine that some of the larger cities maybe have not dealt with it, or people have said that, you know, it's unfair the way they've dealt with it. So, the state has stepped in, fortunately or unfortunately, right? So, we're just trying to live within the confines of what they've dictated to make it work for us.
That's correct.
All right, Councilman Gama?
Thank you. Just about every Memorial Day, Labor Day, and Fourth of July, you can find me out on the beach barbecuing with a large group of people. And we've oftentimes thought, you know what? I bet we could sell a lot of water, you know, a dollar a bottle. So, my question is, if somebody says, "I'm going to Wainimi Beach to sell water and soda on Fourth of July," would they have to have a cart, or could they just set up a little table and say, "I'm selling water and soda"?
Theoretically, they could be a stationary street vendor, in which case, they would still need a street vendor's license. They would still need to comply with the terms of our statute, provided they aren't a public right-of-way and not on a private property. And they would still, the problem, the difference is, is that the penalty provisions, while they are higher for violations of the licensing ordinance, once that person comes within the terms of our vending license ordinance, so, for example, let's say you're cited for not having a vending license. Well, then, your administrative fines are much heavier, because even in that event, we cannot use criminal process against that person. So, then they go, "Okay, fine, I'm going to go and get a vending license." Once that person secures a vending license, their fines are immediately dropped down to the $100 for first infraction, $200 for the second. They fall right back into an ability-to-pay determination in the administrative appeals process. So, the city's hands are also very tied with respect to any fines or administrative process that can be brought against anyone in violation of the ordinance.
One more. So, could we, as a city, say, "We're going to allow four food trucks to vend on the beachfront during the summer months on the weekends," so to speak? Let's just say the weekends. Could we do that to kind of give a business opportunity to a food truck and do it? Would that fall under this- is that considered street vending? Is guess what I'm asking?
I don't think a food truck falls within the definitions of a pushcart or the way that we've defined anything else. I believe that vehicle vending, such as taco trucks and things like that, fall outside of the scope of SB 946.
Okay.
Okay, I have one more speaker card. Becky Bruning?
Okay, my question is, what can you do about the ones who are licensed in Oxnard, but they're in Port Wainimi? Where I live, Oxnard is behind me and three houses down, and those vendors are up and down my street every day.
Well, once Port Wainimi has an ordinance in place that allows us to, because our prior ordinance was null and void by operation of SB 946, once Port Wainimi has an ordinance in place that allows these people to be cited, the most that we could do is cite them for not having a valid street vending license. And then, if they applied for one and were successful in getting them, then a first violation would be a $100 fine, second violation within a year would be a $200 fine, and so on and so forth, as spelled out in SB 946.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, I understand this is the first reading, and we'll be coming back for a second reading at our next meeting?
Yes.
Possible? Okay. All right. Moving on then, to council members' reports, comments, and requests for future agenda items. Do we need to vote on this? Okay, so, we need to vote on the recommendation to introduce by title only and wait for their reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Port Wainimi, California repealing Article 3, Chapter 3, Division 17, and adopting Article 5, Chapter 8, commencing with Section 5801 of the Port Wainimi Municipal Code pertaining to sidewalk vending, and take any such additional action. So, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All on paper?
Aye.
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 All right.
I need a roll call vote. I need to take a roll call vote.
Okay, roll call vote. Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Schnapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gama?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, ready to move on now? Okay. All right, council members' reports, comments, and requests for future agenda items. Anything from staff?
Just real quickly, it's been a busy time in Port Wainimi this last few weeks. And for me, one of the more interesting things that, as a councilman, I was invited to attend was the Farmer of the Year Award. And you might ask, well, we have no farms in Port Wainimi. However, the new commissioner for Ventura County has chosen Port Wainimi as a place to reside. So, the agricultural commissioner for the county will now reside in Port Wainimi. And he is very interested in how our cannabis is grown and whether it meets the county requirements, you know, pesticides and things like that. Mr. Gama and I, and I'm sure Mr. Gama will probably talk more about it, we went basically on a water tour as a member of the Port Wainimi Water Association, the board. We went on a tour to find out how our water, where our water comes from, and how it gets there. So, just keep that brief. My wife and I went to the Wheelhouse Fair. I thought it was very well-run. It was well-received by the community. I guess my only comment my wife said was, "There was no place to sit." So, and then finally, while we were at this water tour, we did not, I did not get a chance to go to the Chamber of Commerce volunteers and people of the years. I do want to recognize Beverly Kelly, only because I've had, working as a volunteer at the museum, Beverly has shown great ability to relate to the kids. We invite various different elementary school kids to come out here to find out the history of Port Wainimi, and she's been able to relate well to those kids and make history seem alive. So, those are my comments.
Yeah, we really do take for granted when you turn the water faucet on, and it's really fascinating to understand, there's literally thousands and thousands of people who work every single day to make sure that water is available in your tap. So, when you turn the water on in your bathroom, know that there's a pipe that goes out your property somewhere and connects to another pipe, and then that connects to another pipe, which connects to another pipe, which connects to a bigger pipe, and then a bigger pipe, and then eventually, there's a treatment center. And then, there's also an aqueduct that supplies a treatment center. So, we went to a place called Diamond Lake, 864,000 acre-feet of water. It's a man-made lake. All the water is pumped into this lake, and it was eye-opening. It's so fascinating. We have aligned the director of the Metropolitan Water District with Larry Downing, and we're going to schedule him to come to the museum to give a talk. And I strongly encourage anybody that could find a way to get on a tour, to go on a tour, and once we get him scheduled, to come and listen to him, because it is so fascinating. It really is. I attended a meeting at Sterling Hills, and it had to do with energy. And there's a couple of things that came up. I think I sent you a flyer for one of them, the Clean Power Alliance. So, that's something I think we were kind of, I was like the third wheel, there's a couple employees from the City of Port Wainimi Water Department there, and they put up a big slide showing all the Ventura County public agencies that were members, and then pretty much all of them except the City of Port Wainimi. So, they say that we could generate savings and that we could get free engineering and stuff like that. So, I think it's something that we need to look into. Also, there was a presentation by the Southern California Regional Energy Network, and again, we're not a member of it, but they're saying that we could save money by becoming a member. So, maybe we should look into that. There's 28 Ventura County agencies that are a member of that Southern California Alliance. Also, their SCE Edison is rolling out a new rate program that there's an opt-out period that we need to either opt-in or opt-out. They're changing the peak hour period from 12 to, it is currently from 12 till 6:00 p.m., now it's going to be from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. So, what they encourage public agencies do is to think about when their pumps are running and stuff like that, and trying to get it out. So, in terms of future agenda items, at the risk of sounding like a complainer, I think I'm going to sound like a complainer right now. I live next to Miranda Park, and Miranda Park is with some safety issues, and I saw a baseball team practicing last week out on the field. And the infield, pretty good, not excellent, but the outfield, it literally looks like little grenades have blown up all over the place, and it's just a dangerous place for kids and athletic teams to be running around. So, I witnessed a softball team trying to practice, and the coach finally called the practice because of safety today, or yesterday, I can't remember. There was another team out there practicing, and again, if we're going to leave the field in its current state, we might want to consider putting a warning sign that, you know, there's holes and it's dangerous, and it's just a little concern of mine, and so, thought I'd bring it up. Also, for future meeting, I would like to agendize a conversation on the budget process. I feel like we're behind schedule on that, and I believe we're supposed to have a budget in place for July 1 implementation. And I recall last year that, maybe a year before, I'm not sure, but I do recall that we were without a budget for a significant amount of time. So, I just want to make sure that we work really hard to get a budget approved before June 30, 2019. So, those are the two items that, I don't want to sound like a complainer, but I might. Thank you.
No, that's all right. The fields, sports fields, I think with the city's improving financial fortunes now, we can start to invest some money in deferred maintenance on things like park sports fields. So, the first task will be to kind of get a fix on what that would cost to rehab the fields at Miranda. And then, we can talk about that as part of the two-year budget discussion, because I've really been hoping that we can, whether it's Measure U money, cannabis money, some of the other, just general fund revenue increases that we're experiencing now, that we can allocate some of that to do maintenance on parks. And there also, there's also grant money out there for a variety of park projects now, which would be great to get some of as well. So, that one definitely, you know, if not, in the next couple of meetings, as part of our next, our two-year budget process, we'll be discussing that. And then, the budget calendar, Mr. McDonald is going to be presenting a report at the April 15 meeting on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is completed now, and will incorporate a budget calendar into that report, because there is one that exists, and it's definitely geared toward having the council adopt the budget in time for, you know, prior to, hopefully, a couple of weeks prior to July 1, because you're correct. I think it was one year, the, it was like October or November before a budget, that was 2015, that a budget was not approved until that far end of the year. Last time around, it was August of 2017. So, still not by July 1, not quite as bad as the previous time, but we don't want to make that tardiness a habit. We want to get back on a cycle of having it done and completed by no later than June 30. So, we'll, but we'll have that calendar available for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Gama? I mean, Councilwoman Schnaps. Sorry, first time.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, last week was a busy week, and it ended up being that Captain Jeff Chisholm had invited local dignitaries to take a tour of NBVC, and so, it was about six or seven hours of our day. Our city manager was there. I was joined by councilmembers Rollins and Gama, as well as our mayor, and we spent the day out there with him and his team. You know, there's over 80 tenants that are on both bases, and so, we actually toured both. One of the great highlights of the day was when we got to sit in the simulator and actually fly a big swing, right? You crashed? Oh, boy.
I was a Top Gun.
Very cool. So, it is a simulation for then the pilots that fly all the, you know, wonderful, different aerial vehicles out there at NBVC, but they don't necessarily get to fly real time, but they use quite a bit of their time to sit in the simulator. And they go through different scenarios and make sure that they're prepared for any emergency or for just, you know, plane, just taking and having that experience under their belt. So, that was one of the highlights. But we got to then even take a look at NAVSEA, and that's a location out here on Wainimi's base. It is where they take an old ship, and they gear it so that it could actually do testing of missiles and taking down of missiles. And it's really incredible, the entire process that they do. But this NAVSEA group is one of 10 locations- But this NAVSEA group is one of 10 locations, and this is the only place really that they test what they test here. The other locations test other things. So it is an incredible cohort of people, professionals as well as the Navy, that get to do this right here out of our own space. Really a wonderful tour. And so I'm thankful for the captain and the public affairs team out at NBVC that put it together. That evening then, we had the cannabis forum. And I just have to say that the chief of police really put Port Huaynimi on the map that day and going into the future, because we had the chief of cannabis business operations for California here. And she with the chief toured four of our locations. And we really have become pretty much like a role model, best practices approach to what we did with the cannabis ordinance and how it's being effective and efficient and monitoring and everything else that happens. So, kudos, chief, for the exceptional work you did, along with then, you know, our city manager and everybody else who helped put it together. Because it was a really wonderful, wonderful presentation. Thank you so much. I love the Mythbusters and busted, you know, with all the myths that everybody has about the business and what it actually then represents for the city. We even had folks that represented other city councils throughout Ventura County, as well as the Sheriff's Department was there, the DA's office was there. They all had eyes and ears open, willing to hear, understand, take a look at what it is here for our city. And hopefully we can help others then move forward on their process to, to incorporate this new, this new law that we all have. So, you did a great job. Thank you so much, chief. And then, and then that was attended by, I think all of us were there, right? This entire team. On Friday, it was where the Huaynimi Chamber went into their 79th anniversary dinner and a community awards night. And that was well-attended too. I don't think I've seen the number that came out this Friday in many years in terms of what they've done. And so just a couple of highlights here. I really appreciated then the tag team that they recognized for Educators of the Year. So there were two, two professors or teachers out of Fred Williams School. And both of them were hilarious, but Missy Hernandez was just an exceptional teacher. And so you know that there's more like her at schools. And it was really kind of refreshing to see that, the vitality that she had, but also just the, the stand-up comedian kind of that who she was and that how it is reflected within a school and the school district. And for everyone that was recognized, congratulations. Even our POA was recognized. And again, you know, Beverly Kelly was recognized and so many others. And it really is a testament to all the people who really do love Port Huaynimi and what it all stands for within the context of these different components that make up our community. So, well done.
Anything else?
I just wanted to add thank you to Chief Salinas and Tony Stewart and staff who took the time out of their day to be there on Thursday night and deliver an excellent presentation. It was well-attended. And I had the opportunity to speak to people after the meeting and answer questions. So I think it was very good that the city council members were able to be there. And I'm sure many of you answered questions as well about the impact that cannabis is having on our, our community. I also would like to congratulate those who received awards from the Chamber of Commerce on Saturday, or that was Friday night, right? Friday night. We had a member of our police department, a member of our streets department, the Port Huaynimi POA all received awards that night. So congratulations to all of them. I have nothing to add to the agenda, so is there anything else? Councilwoman Gama?
Yes, I just want to reiterate that both Councilman Rollins and I really wanted to be there, but we were stuck on a bus looking at California poppies on the 15 in Temecula, I think. But, and, we were, yeah, it was, it was a bummer that we couldn't get back in time. LA traffic was something else on that day. But congratulations to everybody and we were there in spirit, believe me.
Okay. Councilmember, yeah?
Yes, I have one more thing. So, the City of Ojai set a really high bar for themselves. And they have something going on on Friday, April 12. I'm not going to be able to make it, but I think some of the others had received this invitation as well. So the city has achieved, and it's the first municipal conversion to zero emission landscape maintenance equipment in Ventura County. And so they're actually going to have a big ceremony about that. So kudos to the smallest city in Ventura County for getting this done. I think that's exceptional and testament to Mayor Johnson and his team.
Okay, thank you. One more thing I wanted to add was the wheelhouse event on Saturday went very well. Chief Salinas was out there almost all day. You've had a busy week. So, thank you for your presence there and, and your, your staff, your officers who were there as well. I, I had my doubts about the layout, but it, fire department, you guys did a great job helping with that layout. And it worked out really well and I think was well-attended. I did hear comments about the seating though, so maybe next time.
One more thing, you just reminded me that not only did the police department and the police explorers do a wonderful job on Saturday, on Sunday, they're out at the beach and we had about 300 cars participate in a car show. The, it's put on by some military folks. It's called the Show and Shine. And it was incredible. There's about 300 cars that participated and it was highly successful. And the police explorers were out there getting good exposure, good interaction. Again, really nice to see these young kids out there working at an event, getting good experience. And it was just a wonderful event. And so, whoever put that on, you did a great job.
Okay. If there are no more comments, I will adjourn the regular meeting of Monday, till Monday, April 15, which will be our next meeting, to be held at 5:30 PM here in the city council chambers. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.